Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council tonight. We note that we have six members of the council here. Councilman Lars Mordfeld is excused. With that, tonight it's my opportunity to have the opening ceremony. As soon as I get the attention over there, we're going to put up a picture here. I had the opportunity this last week of going to Washington DC and spending some time at the World War II Memorial. Now I want to share a couple of thoughts in connection with that because as I went there, now you must understand that I'm an analytical person and I will get to the nice stuff next. But first I want to talk about the fact that what you see there and looking at this picture to the bottom left is where the Washington Monument is. Let's see, is that right?
Yeah, well, Lincoln Memorial is there and...
Yeah, Lincoln Memorial is to the bottom left with the reflection on. Washington Monument is to the upper right. When I went through that, there's a lot of cement. There's some metal in association with that. On those columns you see around which each which represents one of the states or territories of the US, that they have a metal wreath on both sides, one of wheat and one of oak, symbolically. And then the two towers on the end have some metal in the floor with the seal of a Medal of Valor and then some wording about on one end, the war in Europe and on the other, the war in the Pacific. To your bottom left, the little kind of half circle right there is a wall of stars, gold stars, which represent soldiers killed in action, each one representing 100. And they have some 423 or something like that, stars. In the upper right there where you see kind of the bands of grass going out to the street, that's an inclined walkway where they've put some base relief metal pictures of events surrounding World War II, both on the home front and on the battle front. And when you look at that, it doesn't seem like a lot. There's names of battles in some of the locations there, but there's no names of any of the soldiers there. The interesting part is that World War II veterans who go there are profoundly affected by this symbol. And that is what it is, is a symbol of the nation's appreciation to those soldiers who fought in World War II. And now I've covered the physical aspects of that. The symbols though now is a different part of this. It does not matter to the soldiers, these former veterans, these former soldiers, the fact that it's cement or bronze or if the names are there or not there. What they appreciate is the fact that the nation is recognized in a very profound way in a very prominent location, their sacrifice and service during World War II. And as you stand there, you can turn and look one way and see the George Washington Monument, which represents the founding of our country and the state capitol. You look the other direction, you see the Lincoln Memorial, which represents when the nation was about to be torn asunder but was preserved by President Lincoln and the many soldiers at that point in time. World War II was a profound event in our nation's history because of the number of people involved in the fact that so many nations of the world were involved and because of the potential implications to our country. Had the takeover of Europe been successful, that would have placed the US in a very difficult situation and until there were some reverses, until the US got in to help slow that down, they would have accomplished that goal. The Axis powers would have taken over and they would have turned their sights to other areas. Their appetite was very great. Even when they had agreements with Russia, they changed and decided to try and take that over as well. So it's a very significant monument to our country and we have these honor flights from Utah going back there. But again, it is the symbolic nature of what is there that is important to the veterans, to the families of veterans, to the descendants of veterans who served in World War II. Certainly we are a nation blessed with so many good people who sacrificed so much for the defense of freedom, not only in our country but around the world. And I thought it appropriate because it was fresh on my mind to remind us of that sacrifice and these symbols that are so important to remind us of them. Interestingly enough, if you were to stop the average junior high student, they wouldn't know much about the war. They wouldn't know the reasons for the war. But when they're here on this plaza and the veterans show up, many of them in wheelchairs, they have a very different feeling for those individuals. They thank them, they go up to them, they talk to them, they listen to their stories. And suddenly the monument becomes not just a symbol but something living and real from those veterans who were actually there fighting on the front lines and participating in that great conflict. With that then, I think I'll just conclude by saying, you know, sacrifice for freedom is one of the things that made our nation great. And here is one of the symbols that we add to make our nation what it is today. Though it struggles, though it has its weak points, it is still the world leader of freedom and the greatest nation on earth. With that, thank you. And that will conclude the opening ceremony. We have a lot of flexibility on the opening ceremonies so we kind of get to do what we want. And that's what I wanted to do today. With that, don't see any scout groups here, no other elected officials. Then approval of the minutes. We need a motion on the minutes of March 1st.
May I have a vote for approval of the minutes of March 1st?
Second. We have the motion before us. Any discussions? Seeing none, place it for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, March 1st, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passed unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next we go to our public comment period. We have several who are here to speak to us We would say to you that you are limited to five minutes per person maximum. You can take less if you want. It is not a debate. It is not a conversation. It is your time to do with as you please. We will not interrupt unless you get really far out there and start climbing on the rafters and we might interrupt. As long as you're just there talking, the time is yours to do what you want. And we will go no longer than 30 minutes. And with that introduction, following that, the city manager has an opportunity to make any comments you'd like and then following him, the council. First we have signed up tonight, Terry Draper. And we have your information here, so if you would like to come forward.
Do you mind if I put some things here on the first few chairs?
That's fine.
These are what five minutes is doing. I'd like to start off by saying thank you mayor for giving me an audience this evening. I've been a resident of this area for the past 45 years. I've raised my family here and want to continue to stay here. I want to thank West Valley for their efforts to stay on top of the scourge of graffiti in our city. A scourge that invites crime marks our city as uncaring. With that in mind, I would like to address another form of graffiti that is increasing in our city and through our valley. The posting of degrading signs through our city is also a form of graffiti. If I understand the city codes on posting such signs, they are illegal. These signs are posted on power poles, regulatory signposts, school crossing signposts, and staked in city park strips. The posting of and color of the signs is distracting and confusing because it conflicts with legal regulatory signs. I have often removed such offensive signing on an individual basis. However, this spring has evoked an explosion of increased posting. This pile of signs represents a timeframe of less than three weeks and is limited to an area of two streets, 3500 South and 4100 South between 3600 West and 6000 West. Several intersections yield of postings of six signs each. Several signs are in competition with each other. When will this end? Are we willing to continue to accept such illegal graffiti? Am I the only one in this community that is offended by such signage? I have packaged my sign collection sorted by phone number for your convenience. First place with 36 signs is number 1546. Second place with 21 signs is number 0100. A pale third with one sign posting goes to 3530. Three signs are offering starting salaries of $10,000 per month. I am retired. That one is particularly appealing to me. A very few offenders here. A very few calls from city authorities would be required. The offenders have been provided, the offenders haven't even provided their phone numbers. Please help rid our city of this downgrading offensive form of graffiti. And with that, I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
I'm a longtime resident. I'm from the area Chesterfield of West Valley. And what I'd like to bring to the council and to the city is to see if we can change the ordinance in the agriculture areas of West Valley with the roosters that we have. I'd like to see it read one rooster to 20 hens. We have too many roosters and they're only good for one purpose, to fertilize eggs for more chickens. Roosters are for fighting. That's the nature. They're not good to eat. And since cockfighting is against the law, I see no reason to have more than one per 20 hens that 20 hens can handle. Roosters, when you have more than five, you're asking for a cockfight, which brings illegal activity to our city: gambling, car theft, drugs, fights, prostitution. It's all in that same ring, which is all illegal and it's a big crime in especially my area of Chesterfield. What they do is they have the pens, the roosters are in a pen by themselves. They're not in with other chickens because they're actually the cockfighting roosters. Now my house, I would have a rooster running at large in this big area with the hens as my neighbor. But you go next door and you've got 200 cages and that's what they are, is cages for these animals and we just got roosters, which are not your pretty little roosters that are running around. They're actually cockfighting roosters. So I'd like to see if we could change the ordinance and minimize our roosters to 20 hens, which is would be cutting down on a lot of crime in our area of Chesterfield and maybe other parts of West Valley. But I'm kind of particular in my neighborhood because that's where I was born and raised. And that's just part of helping clean up the crime that we have over there and it would release the police department to do other problems in that area that we have as we do in the whole city. So if you could just take that into consideration, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next we have Josh Schremerman.
Do you want me to give my name and address?
We have that here, but you say your name correctly. Why?
Joshua Lee Sherman. Thank you for your presentation mayor. Last week you weren't here along with Dawn and Steve. You were missing too. So I gave a talk last week about the city skate park and I just wanted to reiterate that that's on the agenda tonight and just briefly mention that. From our conversation last year, mayor, I appreciate you inviting me into your office and talking about the skate park, about my passion for it and the amount of time and money the city's gone into it. I appreciate everything in regards to the funding, the land donation mitigation, everything we've gone to this far. I also believe, just like the first gentleman in this city, and I do love this city. And it's really important to me that we have the park for the kids of the city. I still believe it's very important. It's a sport that is still growing, still has millions of participants, from my age of 38 to my friends who have kids that skateboard. It's not a fringe sport. It's not a thing that's going to be gone anytime soon. Since the 70s, it's only grown exponentially. And I believe, I know from billions of dollars being spent in the action sports arena, X-Games wouldn't exist without action sports. Snowboarding wouldn't be what it is and it wouldn't have helped skiing become what it was too. All these sports are actual legitimate passionate sports that people care for. And I do applaud the city for going forward and funding this sport. Kearns Park is the closest one to West Valley, but being the second biggest city in the state, this is our first skate park, 420,000 residents. And Kearns Park can barely handle the population it already has over the years, over the last two years it's been open. So moving forward, as you go on your Sunday drives, drive by any of the skate parks in the valley. Drive by and just see how crowded they are all the time, rain or shine, seasonal or not. They're always full of kids having fun. And I believe going forward, this park will do the same benefit for our city. It'll give these kids something to do. So I appreciate everything, all the individuals moving forward. Thank you and... Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Next we have Laura Levitt.
Mayor Bigelow and members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to talk to you. My name is Laura Levitt and I am the director of the American Preparatory Academy School over on Crystal Avenue just off of Redwood. And what I would like to do tonight is just express my gratitude actually for the support that we have had from West Valley City. We have two campuses here in West Valley. Ours is the little one, not the one that is the great and spacious building out there by Bangor. But both campuses have received such support from you. As I'm looking at your faces, there's so many of you who have come to visit our school and visit with the students and share some thoughts about that. I cannot tell you how much that means to us. Thank you for that. I'd also like to thank you particularly about a few things that the city has done for us this past year. We do have some students that walk although a lot of them are driven by their parents. But there are many that walk and of course that area does not have sidewalks. And we worried about the safety of our students walking along that road to the campus. And the city last year put in a four-way stop which, and crosswalks, both there on the four-way stop and upright by our campus, which have made it so much safer for the students that are walking there. And also have relieved a lot of the traffic problems as in the morning and the afternoon we have so many parents coming and going. That was a huge difference. Also we got, and this was a surprise to us, a speed limit sign, the one that posts the speed limit. And for me personally, I have a mission every time I go to school and that is to hit it dead on at 25 and keep it steady as I drive through. But we've appreciated that reminder. I know that there's been some concerns brought maybe to the, I believe it was the police chief's meeting about speeding along there. So I just want you to know that we want to be good neighbors there in Chesterfield and so we will address and remind our parents that responsibility of being there in that I just wanted to express that appreciation to all of you for the support and also to extend an invitation to come and visit anytime. We have assemblies on Thursday morning at 8:15 and we would love to have any of you come to visit. In fact, this Thursday, the kindergarten has learned the entire Gettysburg Address, the whole thing, and they will be presenting that at that assembly this Thursday. So we send that invitation. And may I finish with one question? That sign, the 25 mile an hour one that flashes at you, has been tagged. And so my question is, is that something that we could go and clean up or is there some that we would contact to just have that paint off of there? Anyhow, thank you so much for your support. We're so glad to be part of West Valley City.
Thank you. Next we have Judy Roder.
Mayor and city councilman, it's a privilege to be in front of you. I too want to say the same things as Laura said and appreciate everything that this council has done for this school. And I also want to add something else. I am extremely grateful and proud of our chief of police. The fact that he has meetings with the community once a month and it's so transparent is such a relief to me as a resident. And I'm grateful for that and I want to acknowledge that you guys brought him here and I hope that you keep him here for a long, long time. And thank you.
Thank you. That's all that we have on our list to speak today. Are there any others? Seeing no others, we'll close that portion. We'll come now to our city manager, Mr. Powell. Any comments?
Yes, or maybe just a couple of quick ones. I won't try to address everything that was brought up here. We had quite an extensive public comment session. But just a couple of quick notes just for maybe the general knowledge of anybody who's here who might be watching on TV or might look at the meeting later. First on the snipe sign issue was brought up by the one gentleman. We actually have a fairly extensive, although not as timely program for taking down snipe signs without the city. And he's absolutely right. They proliferate very quickly. We have some people that are very persistent about mounting those. And they try everything from wrapping clear tape to make them harder to take down to getting in their pickup truck beds and putting them high up on the poles so they're hard to get down and all those sorts of things. But we do go after them and they are illegal. That's true. Some of the things we do is we actually do call the phone numbers that are on the signs. These people have gotten wise to that and sometimes they're pretty cagey about giving their names or addresses of who they are, but we continue to try that as well. I would say just for the general benefit of any citizen, although we don't recommend pulling those signs out of the public right away, they are correct and the gentleman's correct. It's illegal for them to be there. So if you wanted to, for example, pull some signs up or even the ones that are here tonight, leave them with us, I would recommend that you don't destroy them because somebody might come back after them. And we do have the, there are property rights on both sides of this issue even though it wouldn't seem like there would be. We have found that difficult in the past as well. So we'll continue to go after those and try to get those as quickly and efficiently as we can. The other comment I wanted to make was directed just to the question about the graffiti. You can actually both report and handle graffiti in your own property. We support both methods of that. Certainly if we get reports on public utility type of fixtures, we'll go out and clean those graffiti tags off of there. However, we also do have another way that you can participate on those yourselves. Our graffiti division will give you like clean off wipes that if you wanted to like a really fast response or wanted to be able to do that yourself and get them off like the same morning, you saw them for example, we'll provide those to people at their request so they can have them and make that happen as well. So you're welcome. And that's all I've got mayor.
Thank you to the council.
First I have a question. This is from Mr. Powell. As far as these signs go, can those be reported and added on on our website or...
I'm not sure about the website itself. We do have a general comment or question or complaint sort of board which you could use for that. I don't know if there's something specific to the snipe signs. The other way to do that would be obviously to make a complaint and just call the department directly.
Call the community preservation department?
Right.
Okay. Then they would know that's a place to go looking at, to look at if they haven't driven down that road or looked at that spot. Then Mr. Draper, thanks for removing those signs. You have the invitation to leave them with us?
They're yours for your use only.
And my concern would just be your safety. I don't want anybody getting hit by a car, getting in fight with somebody that's putting up the signs. But I agree that they are not indicative of the quality of street that we want to have. The other comment that I had is I hadn't of course, not raising any chickens, thought about that rooster question. And that certainly might be a way that we could limit the cockfighting as if we limit the number of roosters that are available in an agricultural area. And I kind of thought in my mind, well, what if somebody had cattle but it turned out they only had bulls? And I don't think we'd want to have a farm filled with bulls anymore than we want a farm filled with roosters. It's not really maybe agriculture. It might be something else. And so maybe we could look at that as future meeting. And then thanks to everybody that came and commented. It's good to hear back from the residents. We don't always have anybody here to comment. And I've been here in this skate park for six years and we're doing it. And I've been here in the skate park for six years, and we're doing it. Isn't that great?
Yeah.
Going to be getting the build out there.
I might also add, if you do see someone putting up some of these signs, if you call that into community preservation, you know, and say they're putting these signs in this area and give an address, we can get some community preservation officers out there to explain the law to them, too. So if you do see it happening, please call the community preservation and let them know about it.
Anything else? One thing I would mention to Mr. Pyle, these signs, if someone does come to claim them, I assume that they have to provide proper identification to be able to claim them, and with that proper identification...
Comes the information, be able to cite, educate, or otherwise deal with these...
That's correct. Very good. So, and just as a note on some of those, I know some of those signs are what are commonly referred to by Department of Consumer Affairs as scams. The $10,000 a month is usually for illegal activities. And I've seen others who've been involved in them and are paying for it now, many years later, themselves. So, so apart from being a graffiti on our community, they are also promoting illegal activities. With that, then, any further comments from the council? Then we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you for your participation tonight. We appreciate that. This has been a big council meeting, a lot of people here, other than scouts. We have Resolution 16-54 to approve a contract with A&amp;Z Landscaping for maintenance of certain city properties. These are approximately 16 parcels that are small parcels that are landscaped or in need of certain items. And because the city has landscape crews that work on large parks, large areas, they have large equipment, these small ones don't fit in well and are difficult for our staff to manage. It is actually cheaper to contract that out, $59,962, and they go and take care of those little parcels around the city. Actually, one of them's right here by the city offices, those little berms out there. We can get our big equipment up on those very easily. That is the problem, the issue before us. We received only two bids, and of course, the lower one is the one that we are taking. And with that introduction, then, to the city council for any action, I would note also, for those of you here, these are issues that were presented to the council last week. This will be the second time they've been heard, and we'll... So if there's not a lot of questions, that's not a surprise. Last week was when we had a lot of questions. Earlier this evening in our study meeting, we studied those items that will be in our next city council meeting, which, for the benefit of those who might want to attend, will be three weeks from today. We will not hold city council meeting next week because of the caucus meetings and presidential preference poll, or whatever they call that, or election. It's not really an election. And then the following week is our fifth Tuesday of the month where we routinely do not hold a meeting. So then, to the council.
May I move for approval of Resolution 16-54?
Motion, second. Second, properly before us, any discussion? Comfortable with the way it is? With that, then, we'll turn to our city recorder for a roll call vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next is Resolution 16-55 to award a contract to Stamp Construction Inc. for the Centennial Park Skate Park Project. Obviously, as you've heard, this is a major park for the city, $1,290,330. And this will be built on the, I guess you would call it, close to the northwest portion of the park, right on 5600 West. We'll go from there in toward the park. We had, I was thinking on the previous one that we had two bids, but this one we had two bids on. I wasn't here last week, so I had to do it all by reading up. And so the other bid was actually double what the lowest bid was, because they, I think they were serious about doing it, because they couldn't do it in the timeframes and constraints that was required in the bid request. And this is a company that we've worked with before, so it's someone that we're familiar with and able to work with. The funds for this come from stormwater utility fees. Salt Lake County has put, has, through a negotiation with some other properties, put some money in, and park impact fees for this project. With that introduction, it will be a park for all of, not just, I guess, our West Valley City residents, but probably for others as well. With that introduction, to the council for any comments.
Mayor, before I make a motion, I'd just like to make a comment. I was talking with Josh last week, and he says he's been coming here for 15 years or 14 years. I've been serving on the council for 15 years now, and I've watched this project come and go, go up to the top of the list, to the bottom of the list, different creative ways of trying to finance it, either through CDG funding, you know, low-income neighborhood. So we've seen this move all over the place, and it's, it's nice to finally see it at this point. And with that, I'll move for approval of Resolution 16-55. Second.
Motion is properly before us, any further discussion? I've decided, though, that I will probably not go to the park and skateboard. I'm at a point to where I think that is unwise. But I think that's true of skydiving and riding a bike on a main highway, a lot of those risky behaviors that I don't participate in anymore. So, but I, but I do have a grandson who loves to skateboard, so I suspect I'll be over there watching, looking forward to it. Seeing no further comments, we'll place that for a vote. Our city recorder will take that vote.
Councilman Christensen?
Enthusiastically, finally, I get to say yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 15, excuse me, 16-56, an agreement between West Valley City and Grainger Hunter Improvement District to allow construction maintenance of a 36-inch sewer pipeline on property owned by West Valley City, 3200 South Decker Lake Drive. This is part of the new process that we set up. In the past, we were trading work, and now we are actually going through the formal process of actually identifying costs and working back and forth on that. So this is the first one that has come through, part of just our ongoing process as a city for the infrastructure that is needed. Infrastructure's a better term for it. Okay. With that introduction, then, to the council for any action.
Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 16-56.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, it's properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, I always have to check both ways, make sure. Seeing no further discussion, our city recorder will now do a vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 16-57. This is a fairly routine item. We get a number of these, and in fact, on this particular project, we've had, boy, seems like almost an unending list. It's a right-of-way contract and warranty deed, perpetual utility easement and perpetual easement for a wall and slope easement. This is at 4086 South Dublin Circle, but really, what it is, is on the corner of 4100 South and 2700 West. The intersection is being widened as a joint project between ourselves and UDOT, and there's some federal money in that. And so our portion of this is not very expensive. We take just a small piece, what was it about? I can't see it right here, was, wasn't it about $6,000? If I get to write one up.
Yes, I have the overall compensation?
No, the, excuse me, yeah, that's the overall cost. The city's portion is $428.
Twenty cents.
Yes, I usually don't talk in pennies, but that's okay. I don't know if that came out right, talk in pennies, okay. But it is part of this overall project. The city is very fortunate to have gotten these funds, 2700 West on 41st, but also, let's see, 13th West, 27th, and 40th, I believe, are the three intersections where they'll add additional turn lanes. So it'll be a great improvement, again, to our infrastructure and for a relatively small commitment on the part of the city. With that introduction, then, to the council for motion.
I move for approval of Resolution 16-57.
Second.
We have the motion properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place that for a vote with our city recorder.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. That concludes our regular business, but I believe that we are going to continue with an executive session for the purpose of dealing with the disposition of real property. So we need a motion to close this meeting, go into an executive session for the purpose of dealing with the disposition of real property, and that the meeting be adjourned at the conclusion of that business during our executive session. To the council, then, for a motion.
I would move that we adjourn the general meeting and convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing disposition of real property.
Second.
Okay. Motion is properly before us, that we will close this meeting, hold an executive session, and adjourn at the end and during that meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We thank you all for coming tonight. We will now convene in an executive session for the purposes of dealing with that property.